All right, thank you. And now we will start our Selma City Council and our Planning Commission's special joint meeting. Welcome to the Planning Commission. Thank you for joining us tonight. Good to see you. As someone said, we're killing two birds with one stone, which is always a good thing. We're being efficient. And we're gathered here in September nineteenth at 2022 at 6:07 PM in the Selma City Council chambers at 1710 Tucker Street in Selma, California. Our meeting is being held within accordance with AB 361. And we have our teleconference phone number of 1301-715-8592. The webinar ID is 891-6864-5005. When on the phone, if you wish to address council during the public comment portion of the agenda, press star nine to raise hand, and we will select you from the meeting queue. Press star six to unmute and mute yourself. Would you please call the role of the city council first and then the planning commission city clerk?
Councilmember Garrett.
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro.
Here.
Councilmember Trujillo.
Here.
Mayor Protem Cho.
Here.
Mayor Robertson.
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner Solis.
Here.
Commissioner Sandu. Commissioner Singh.
Here.
Chairperson Curry.
Here.
Potential conflicts of interest. Any council member or commission member who has a potential conflict of interest may now identify the item and recuse themselves from discussing and voting on the matter. Oral communications. At this time, any member of the public may address the city council or planning commission regarding any item on the special meeting agenda over which the council has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will be taken on any item not on the agenda. Issues raised will be referred to the city manager for review. Members of the public shall limit their remarks to three minutes. Do we have anyone who would like to come up and be heard tonight at this time? Come on up. Right to the podium. And welcome.
Good evening, council. My name is Mark Dudley. I'm a third time Selma resident. The reason I'm here is we are holding a prayer run for Jalissa Fuentes' family October 1st. And we're doing this to help raise a reward, to maybe get someone to come forward. We are starting this off October 1st in Fresno at Cornerstone Church, and we're hoping to end it here in Selma. And we are looking to end it at a local park with your guys' permission. Sister Rachel here. We'll go over the details in regards to that. But that's basically why we're here tonight, is to secure a spot to hold prayer at the end of our run.
Great. Thank you for that, Mark.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have a comment they would like to make at this time? Come on up.
Good evening, council. My name is Rachel Morales. I'm actually a resident of Fresno, but I am joining with Mr. Dudley and a few others to organize this run that we are planning. The purpose of the run, like he said, is to raise money for the family of Jalissa Fuentes to help not only with the reward, but also with any costs for a private investigator that they've been wanting to do. Also, like any type of resources that are helping and aid the search for her. So the run itself includes a lot of cars, motorcycles, vehicles coming from Cornerstone Church, which is where registration will take place. Funds, registration fees will be collected, and that will be what's donated to the family. Once they drive into Selma, like I said, I did submit applications to Lupe, and I forgot his last name. I have the emails. I submitted applications for the event, for sound permit, for the event itself, and also a waiver to hopefully avoid the cost, which will take out of the donations. So we've submitted all that. I have not heard back. So we just wanted to come tonight to bring it to council to make you guys aware of our intentions with this. And then also just, I want to stress that it is to raise money, but more importantly than that, it's to gather our community, both from Fresno, from Selma, from all surrounding areas that know of Jalissa's story, that want to come together in prayer. We are believers in Jesus Christ, and we believe in prayer and the power of it. So this run, again, the most important part of it is the prayer that will take place at the park. We initially requested Lincoln Park to be our ending spot. That's what is on the application. However, we've received a huge response from the community, from the public, from ministry people that I have worked with on other runs similar. And we're expecting a kind of a big turnout. If it's possible, we would like to maybe move the location to a larger park here, if that's possible. I know it's late and we're under two weeks before that date. If it's not possible, we will make Lincoln Park work. But again, we wanted to bring it to the city to make you aware, to hopefully get your blessings. And if there's any way to expedite the applications, I turned them in almost two weeks ago. I know there was probably a longer needed time, but again, we kind of pulled this together at the last minute. So yeah, that's why we're here, just to bring this, bring the community together and just hopes that we can bring Jalissa home to her family where she belongs. So we appreciate your time and listening, and I do believe that Jalissa's family is here, and they wanted to address council as well.
Good. Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
I'm Jalissa's grandmother, and we would like to have this for the prayer mostly. And I mean, she's been gone too long now, and we need the help of the community. And we need to bring her home. And this is what it takes to do it. We want to do it, and we pray that you guys agree to have it. And we just know that so many people want to go and pray and help us find her. And we're just praying that you would say yes to this, and we just thank you.
Thank you very much. Our hearts, our souls are with you. We just want Jalissa to come home safely. City manager, this is a, it sounds like from what they're saying, if they're looking for a fee waiver. This is the last meeting in September. Our next meeting will be a little bit after October 1st. From what I heard, their run is going to be October 1st at one of the parks. So it sounds like the application is going through. That's happening. But in terms of the fee waiver, that's something that the council has to, has to debate and decide on and approve. But that will be after the actual event. Is there such a thing as a retroactive fee waiver? If, you know, the council considers the waiver that they promised to pay for their October 1 event?
I think that that would be appropriate. However, council has previously established guidelines for waivers, that it would only approve them for nonprofits. So if the application is being submitted under a nonprofit, then I think that would be appropriate.
And a nonprofit would also consist of a church. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
It's a non-agendized item.
It's a, we can't really talk about it again, but it will.
It's not sponsored by the church. It's us individuals not going to the church.
Okay. Earl, do you want to get up and say something?
My name is Joe Fuentes. I love this town. Thing I can say, but what really touched me was the guys that came and did the diving of a Carter Lee Pine Flat Damp and everywhere. They were so gracious. But what really touched me about, because I'm a hunter, that makes me feel good because we know she's still somewhere, is that what he said about Selma. So I'm going to back you up on it. What they said on the TV, and hopefully some of you guys heard that diver when he talked. He said they've done to many, many, many risks like that. And they never had done to them what was done by the people of Selma. A motel was given to them free for every day that was here. Families made them dinners anytime they wanted to eat. Vows provided meals three times a day for every day they were here. Estrella's restaurant promised them meals for every day they were here. The rest of the community were bringing water, punch for snacks, everything they did. And the final statement to them was, we cannot believe that this town, Selma, got together. Go look for that young lady. They were in the hundreds out there. You've seen it on TV. You'll see them out in the vineyards, in the hills. The community got together. And this is why we're coming here. Because I believe in my heart. I got a little involved with Selma, you know, as a PD president there at White School for a good while and got to know the board and, you know, some of the people. And no matter what our thoughts are, our indifference, when you're on a board or off a board or whatever, that's always going to happen. But the one thing that I do believe, and I do know from me here in this town, is when push comes to shove, Selma takes care of its people. And that's why I'm up here, you know, because I've been around a lot of you, you know. And you don't just talk to talk, you walk it too. And so that's why I'm up here right now, because I've told everybody, man, we're being blessed. We're going to the council, you know, and I'm not trying to feed your mind, believe me or not. But I am very grateful that you invited us anyway to share what we want to do. Well, I miss her dearly. I'm getting old, and the one thing I ask God, because, you know, I found God in my life a few, few, few years ago, and I asked Him, I said, Lord, don't let me go until I see her. And then He's wanted to take me home, take, oh shoot, take me home. So I appreciate everything you guys are doing. We'll try to do.
Thanks, Mr. Fuentes. Appreciate that. Just as a general remark, if that application has already been turned in, there may want to be a changing of that application, maybe an amendment in the name of the church, if that, if that could happen, since the council only approves fee waivers for nonprofits and churches, and that, that came up with, with a banner issue a few months ago. And the council had that policy and the council, that's why there are policies. We have to, we have to hold to those policies. Oral communications. Anybody else like to say anything?
Jim Avalos, 1701 Dinuba. You know, these, these parents are here for a reason, and you know, any, if it was one of your kids, whenever would be the first thing they'd be doing, as they're standing right here before us. And under these crises right now in our community, we have to step up to the plate. I know we have some rules as far as nonprofit and all this, but these are different circumstances in our community that we have to address under the emergency, I call it, I call it emergency act situation. And law enforcement is doing everything they can. I know they do, because I know who they are. And I do have been on ride alongs with these guys, and I know who they are. But they're doing their, but also they need help to raise money to, for reward. A lot of times you see on TV Crime Stoppers, they put up money, and five minutes, they catch the villain. So I, under these situations right here, guys, I think we should take a long look at situations like this, on a crisis situations, victims of being victimized here in our community. If it was a child or whatever, we wouldn't hesitate. So these are different situations, guys. These are not just, you know, this is a serious situation in a community. We have a person that's lost. We have to find that person individual. So that's all I got to say. I hope you have the wisdom to carry that on, guys. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments.
Can I make a comment, Mayor?
Absolutely.
I think what Mr. Avalos just stated is absolutely correct. I feel the same way, and I think that sitting up here in council, this is a unique situation, and we need to consider this as an emergency. And I think that we should be able to make that decision today and say that we will waive those fees, because if it was your child, we would be doing that. I want to say for each and every one of us sitting up here, if it was one of our child, we would expect the same thing. And I stand with you, the Fuentes family, because I want her back just as bad as you do. Because when we say we're a community, we are a community, and we hurt just as bad because she's missing and we want her back. So I agree. I think that we need to do something today to get that waiver and consider this an emergency.
I agree.
Mayor, may I add something?
Okay.
So, you know, this is my first day sitting in as interim city attorney, but, you know, from my short experience working with other boards and cities, it is definitely, I wouldn't say very common, but it definitely is allowable to make deviations from policies as long as you're not going against any state law or anything like that. You probably already know that, that you can make exceptions and deviations. In terms of adding items to an agenda, the Brown Act does allow for three scenarios where it's, it's allowable to do that. And number one, that would be an emergency. Number two, that would be if immediate action is required and the need for action came to the attention after the posting of the agenda, which I think would be the circumstance here.
Yeah, we just found out about the run tonight.
So the council, council could definitely do that. It's definitely in the best interest. I'm not remembering the precise requirements for the vote on that, but you know, the more unanimous, the better for that, for the immediate action. So I just wanted to throw that out there to give the council peace that, that it's allowed to, to do that.
Thank you for throwing that out there. Is there a motion to make this an emergency item right now?
Instead of that, I'd like to make, I'd like to recommend that if you wanted to, we are nonprofit, our business, Summer Business Alliance is a nonprofit. We could submit it to a nonprofit and just get with the city, get with the city tomorrow and talk to them and submit it as a nonprofit, so it could stay as a nonprofit rather than do it in an emergency item.
Okay. Is there a motion? The nonprofit has to be in good standing though, right? I believe that's the.
That's a side, that's a, that's just.
So is there a motion to?
Why would we need a motion? It has nothing to do with, it has nothing to do with.
It's, it's, it's up to them whether they want to rename the application, and they're out there talking to the police chief and Parks Community Services.
Mr. Yanez, what would be the process of former, formally considering this item? Would have to be later on the agenda? Could it be now as part of the oral communications?
If you went this, the first route that we were talking about, about adding it under one of those sections of the Brown Act, you, someone would make a motion to go that route. If the votes were enough, it could be added, and then it could be taken at any point in the agenda. The council could choose to place it where you would want it to be placed right now or whenever.
I'll make a motion for the P waiver to add it as an emergency item. Can you call the roll, please, city clerk?
I did.
The motion is for the, just to be clear, the motion is to place it on the agenda.
Emergency item, right.
Go ahead.
We're, we're calling the roll to add this as an emergency item.
I'd like to amend the motion if you were sending it.
First and a second.
Okay. Well, I want to make an amendment, so go ahead.
Okay. Are we going to call the roll? Are we going to take the amendment?
I think the safest thing to do is if it's been seconded, to take the vote on that. Usually if there's a motion and a second hasn't been made, another motion can be made, but it sounds like a second has been made.
Right. There's a second from.
So a vote should be taken, and based on that, you can proceed to.
Okay. Call the roll, please, city clerk.
Then later down the road, when we do place on the agenda, we could have discussion.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes.
Councilmember Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
No.
Councilmember Trujillo?
No.
Mayor Protem Cho?
No.
I'd like to make a motion to amend, or I'm sorry, to add the item to the regular business after item three to consider a fee waiver for the family.
Can we just do that?
No, we didn't.
Didn't we just have the vote to add a fee waiver?
Approving it. We're approving it now before the agenda.
What I, what I understood was that the first motion right now was just to place the.
That was my motion.
That was.
To add it, to add it to the agenda. So that's a duplicate motion. It's the same thing.
I apologize. It didn't sound like that.
No, but that, that was the attempt.
Yeah, the motion was to approve it. And we wanted to add it to the agenda, and we didn't add it to the agenda until.
No, no.
We wanted to vote right then and there. So I want to add it to the agenda.
It was to add the, as an agenda item, because you can't vote on it right away. You have to add it first to the agenda.
That's correct. Yeah, it needs to be added first, and so, so I would probably advise to redo, to redo the motion to place it on the agenda.
Okay, so I'll make the motion again to place it on the agenda, the fee waiver item.
And I'll second it.
That's what I originally made the motion for.
Okay, go ahead.
Call the roll, please.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes.
Councilmember Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cho?
Yes.
Okay, with that, we will add it to the agenda for this meeting. But before we do that, we are going to move on to our work. But before we do that, we are going to move on to our workshop, which is actually, are we not done with the oral communications?
And and Mayor, as well, we were going to present the interim city attorney item as well for approval.
To this, the joint meeting?
Prior to the workshop.
I'm sorry, I thought we were gonna add it to the regular meeting. Okay. Do we have any more oral communications?
As a reminder to the callers that I see on Zoom, if you'd like to invite oral communication, please use the raise your hand option on Zoom, we will add you to the meeting queue. And for the record, Planning Commissioner Juarez did join us on Zoom at six eleven P M.
Okay.
I see no hands raised at this time.
No other hands raised at this time? Okay, no one else had anything to say at this point? Okay. So with that, we are going to add an item from the regular meeting, which would be the number two item on the regular business agenda, consideration of an interim city attorney agreement. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, as you're aware, during the closed session, and as was reported by the mayor following the closed session, the council decided on a three two vote to appoint the law firm of McCormick, Cabot, and Lou as the interim city attorney. And Mr. David Yanez is here representing that firm. And so at this point, staff is requesting approval to enter into that interim city attorney agreement with his firm.
Okay. Thank you for that. Is there any discussion at this point? Mr. Yanez, do you have any comments to make?
Only that I had discussed with the city manager two minor amendments, I'm not sure if those were brought up.
I I did not bring those up, but feel free, or I can discuss them. Actually, yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead and present those, so the the original agreement was asking for a general liability, a limit of two million dollars in terms of the insurance coverage with the aggregate of four million. We did check with our risk management authority whether one million and two million on the aggregate for general liability was appropriate, and they did agree that that's pretty standard for attorney firms. So that would be the only change to the interim agreement that was distributed to the council.
And the last minor amendment was, I had proposed that we would be able to charge expenses for one-way travel. I think the contract was proposed as no travel expenses, but that was something I brought up, I'm not sure if it was discussed. We're, we're fine if that's not something the council wants to approve, but it is something standard that with all the cities that we work with, we, we charge one-way travel.
Got it. Okay. Any more amendments?
That's it.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this topic? Anyone have any input? Anything they would like to weigh in on? Okay, with that, we'll bring it back, is there anyone on Zoom or anywhere else? Okay. We'll bring this matter back to the council for further discussion, does anyone have any comments at this time? Comment I would have is, Mr. Yanez, from what I've seen, you're, you're right on it, you're, 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 you're in it, you're listening, you're engaged. The issue that I've had is we didn't get to interview you in person. And I think it's very important, I'm a firm believer in face to face, and we could have actually gone through those two, two topics face to face, if we would have had that rather than this rather awkward situation. So that's, that's why I voted no on this, and that's, it has nothing to do with you personally, but it has to do with the process. Okay. And with that, is there a motion for approving or not approving the interim, the agreement for the interim city attorney at this time?
I make a motion to approve the contract as amended.
Second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cho?
Yes.
Councilmember Guerra?
No.
Councilmember Treheu?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
No. And with that, we will move on to our workshop, which is a multi-jurisdictional housing element update study session by Fresno Council of Governments.
Thank you very much, Mayor, members of the council, members of the planning commission, Rob Terry, Deputy City Manager. The workshop item before us tonight is a discussion on the multi-jurisdictional housing element update. And this is being conducted by the Fresno Council of Governments with a a good amount of local agencies that are involved in this one. For those of you that were involved in the last round of the housing element updates, as you know, they can be very intense, they can be very costly as well. The recommendation in the previous cycle was for agencies to come together and to do a multi-jurisdictional housing element. It was brand new to the valley at that time, it was not something that had ever been done before. But a lot of agencies felt that it would be something really good and something that was organized by the Fresno Council of Governments at that time as, as an effort to provide even more planning services for their agency members. It was extremely well received by the state. All of the items, of course, were certified for each individual agency. So you had great economies of scale that was able to go into the process in the previous cycle. And so when we came to this cycle here, the recommendation was to do that, that same thing. Because of a lot of demands that are on Fresno Cog, their staff time, there was great discussion on whether or not they wanted to engage in it simply because of the amount of staff time and effort that it takes to engage in it. Local agencies did come together and did lobby Fresno Cog to undertake this process again, because there is a significant amount of time and cost savings associated with it. Fresno Cog did, of course, elect to take this on. Cycle six, which we're in right now, or that this process will will take care of, is significantly different than process five because of a good amount of state housing planning law that has changed. And the estimation was that it would cost the individual agency three to four times what previous cycles would have costed, or what even the the cycle five cost would have been, had they have done it alone. So in all honesty, even doing the multi-jurisdictional housing element in this one, you're still looking at a pretty significant cost, but not nearly what it would have been had we've had to go at it alone. And this is a state requirement to have, to have a housing element in place. With that said, though, the Fresno Council of Governments does have a group of sub consultants that are working on this item right here, they will be leading the presentation tonight. And so I just wanted to do the quick introduction, and I'm gonna hand it over to the consultant group so they can get the presentation started. We did do it as a workshop item intentionally, so that there could be open Q and A between the planning commission, the city council, and the consultant group to make sure that if there's any questions or concerns, that that open dialogue can take place, which is the reason why it's agendized the way that it is. So with that, I'll, I'll hand it over to the consultant group.
Thank you for that great intro, Rob. I'm gonna go ahead and pull up the presentation. Thank you all, city council and planning commissioners and community for coming out tonight. I know you might want to get out there and enjoy the rain, hopefully it's raining a lot in Thelma today.
It's raining.
All right. It's raining at all, I love to hear it. I'm, I'm in the mindset, I take anything I can get with it, so. But let's get this study session started, so we can get to y'all's questions, and then you can continue on with your meeting. I know y'all are quite busy people, so. Again, thank you for the introduction, Rob. My name is Clancy Taylor, I represent the California Coalition for Rural Housing. We've been tasked with doing the community engagement for this effort, so. On this slide, it's just showing you everyone who's involved with it within the county. And I'll go over a brief agenda, we'll get into some introductions, go over a brief introduction into what the housing element is, what it contains. Then we'll move into the RENA, or the Regional Housing Needs Allocation. And then lastly, we'll move into changes to state housing law, since the last time we've done this process. So as Rob said, there's quite a big project team involved in this, the housing element is not a, you know, five-page exercise, it's more of a two hundred fifty-page exercise. So, leading the charge is Christine Kai, the Deputy Director of the Fresno Cog. And then leading our consultant team is Jennifer Gastelum. And then the project manager for the city of Thelma is gonna be Amy Sinshieheimer, and then we also have Nicole.
Put it out on us.
Good evening, everybody, this is Nicole West, I am with Placeworks, and I am also working on this. If Ms. Taylor does not appear, I can open up the PowerPoint that I have on my server and also provide this presentation.
Issues and opportunities within.
Good, good.
I think she's back.
You cut out for a minute, so start at the beginning of this slide, and I will pull up my version of the PowerPoint in case you cut out again and need me to step in.
Thank you, yeah, the internet loves to be unstable sometimes. All right, so pretty much we're just gonna provide an overview of the housing element update process and the new laws, share some information about what to expect and the schedule, and then start gathering some input from you all about what the housing issues and opportunities are in Thelma. So moving into the housing element overview. What is the housing element, first of all? So it's one of the eight mandated elements of the general plan. State law requires that it is updated every eight years. And currently, we are gearing up for the sixth cycle planning period, which requires an adoption deadline for the city of December thirty first of twenty twenty-three. And yes, this, that seems quite far away, over a year away, but in the next slides, I'll take you through kind of the step-by-step process we have to take to get there. So about the housing element, the big thing of what the housing element does is it helps us plan for how the housing needs of all the economic segments of the community. It requires for cities to.
Or.
Backup.
Oh.
And.
Ms. Taylor, you have, you've cut out again, do you think it would be better if I provide the presentation?
I think she's out.
I don't want to waste anybody's time, so I'm happy to take over from here. Sorry for the technical difficulties. Let's see. Okay, and can you see my screen?
We see about the housing element.
Oh, this is still Clancy's screen. Is there somebody that can take control and unshare? Okay, great. And then I will share mine, at least we have a backup plan. Okay. Let's see. Can you see my screen?
Think so.
About the housing element?
Yep.
Okay, great, so as Clancy was saying, this is a plan for meeting the housing needs of all economic segments of the community. And we have to make sure that there is adequate zoning to meet those needs. The state agency that reviews these documents is the Housing and Community Development Department. And so they equate density with affordability, meaning that for the lower income segment of the community, the allocation of housing units, we need to identify sites that allow a certain density to be able to include those sites in the housing element and show that they are available if a developer wanted to come in and develop housing, that would be something dense, which is more likely to be affordable. Excuse me. And the housing element also includes goals and policies to make sure that each jurisdiction provides not only these, showing that there's evidence of sites, but also programs that meet different housing needs as well. And we focus on special needs households that have particular housing demands and sometimes different, face different difficulties in finding and maintaining housing, such as people with disabilities. So the housing element, it's a planning document, it does not require the city or county to build the units themselves. It does not provide funding to build the units, and it does not approve a specific project. So this is all pre-planning before any of those developments are actually getting proposed. There are several chapters of the housing element, and one of the great things that you'll gain from collaborating with the jurisdictions in your region is that not only the efficiency of collaborating on a document with them, but also then you're going to have an even more robust document with a bigger picture of all the different data of what's actually happening, what are the needs of each community? And even though we're going to have that, look at all of the region, we'll still drill down and be able to identify specifically for your community what are the greatest needs, and what are the best way to leverage resources to meet those needs? So as you see here, there are different chapters that are going to go into this document, and the ones that are going to be countywide in particular will be a background report that will have demographic information, housing characteristics, existing and future housing needs, and analysis of the potential market governmental and environmental constraints in the region. And then the fair housing section, this is something that is also new. As, as was mentioned before, we started presenting, the sixth cycle is much more robust this time, more costly to produce. There are new laws that we'll talk about, and one of them is AB six eighty-six, which requires a affirmatively furthering fair housing requirement that provides a requirement to do a lot of analysis of various factors and look at how sites for housing interplay with those different factors and propose programs that can address any of those barriers to fair housing that are identified in the analysis. And then there will be some countywide goals and policies, but there's also going to be some specific ones for your community as well. And then there will be a regional summary of the site's inventory. And then there's local sections. So there'll be specific information about the needs of your community, and one of those includes an inventory of affordable units that are deed restricted and available. And we look at what year those are expiring and provide some different techniques for how to continue to provide affordable units for any of the ones that are expiring. And then local fair housing assessment, that's going to, like I mentioned, there's going to be certain trends that we look at at the regional scale, and then some are very specific at the local scale. There will be a local sites inventory and analysis of resources, those are going to look at the sites that are available to meet the regional housing needs allocation. And then resources such as administrative and financial resources will also be identified in that chapter. There will be a chapter that is the local housing constraints analysis, so we really take a deep dive into your municipal code and look at what the development standards are and make sure that there's nothing that is constraining to the development or availability of housing in particular for each of the different economic levels, income levels, as well as for special housing needs groups. And then there will be local implementation programs that are going to be carried out over the next eight years to go ahead and implement the, the programs of the housing element. And then we do evaluate your previous housing element, and that's one of the first things we get started on, to look at what your programs from the fifth cycle were. And we use your annual progress reports or APRs that you submit to the state every year and summarize those and and look at what you've done over the last eight years, and we also look at which programs should be continued and which ones may need to be modified to meet new law or to meet new initiatives that the council and planning commission and community is interested in implementing. And some of the programs, if they've been completed, they may be deleted. Okay, so we're at the beginning of this process where we're preparing the administrative draft, we'll be working with your staff to make sure that we get access to good data and information so that we can go ahead and draft the document. And then we release a public review draft, which now has a statutory requirement that it is available to the public for thirty days with an additional ten days to process public comment that has come in. And then we submit that draft to the Housing and Community Development Department. They also have a statutorily defined timeline for their review. They have up to ninety days to come back to us with the results of their review process. It's, they are looking very hard in the sixth cycle, we've, we're sort of getting towards the tail end of the sixth cycle, and it's been pretty tough on jurisdictions, if you've been following at all in the, in the planning news, there's been multiple rounds of review. Whereas with the fifth cycle, a lot of jurisdictions got certified on the first round of review. So we do anticipate that we're going to be responding to their review and then re-releasing a revised public review draft. And then we'll work towards getting that conditional compliance letter from HCD. And then we'll come before you and ask you to adopt the housing element. Then it actually goes back to HCD for a certification review after that, which they have up to sixty days to complete. And as it says at the bottom of the slide there, we do outreach throughout the update. And as it says at the bottom of the slide there, we do outreach throughout the update. It's very important to continue to do that outreach and we're here at the very beginning of the process because we want to make sure that we get input as early as possible so that we can integrate it in a meaningful way into the document. So here's a big picture of the regional effort and the timeline. We have started the outreach. We're working on the administrative draft and that that January twenty twenty-three is the target for us to get these drafts to your staff for their review. And then we're going to incorporate their comments and edits, release it to the public in February twenty twenty-three. Hopefully with a big announcement and some more outreach so that we can get more voices and get people's review of that document. And then we're targeting in the late spring, potentially early summer twenty twenty-three to submit that first draft to HCD. And then with the goal of getting them adopted all throughout the the region by December twenty twenty-three. Okay, so the regional housing needs allocation that Clancy originally mentioned. This is something that starts at the state and they look at a lot of different factors to determine the housing needs over the next eight years. And they want to make sure that we're considering all of the different income levels so that people with various types of jobs or various types of income are able to live somewhere that is safe, decent, and sanitary. And so anyway, I digress. The state crunches all these numbers and they come up with a total arena for the sixth cycle for the state. And that's a big number. They they then distribute that to the regional councils of government. And each council of government is responsible for developing a methodology, looking at different factors such as job availability and transit availability and which cities are growing, which cities are shrinking, what's happening in the unincorporated areas. And so each of those COGS distribute the units to each jurisdiction. And that methodology does have to be approved, though, by the state. So the Fresno COG region has almost sixty thousand units. And when I say units, that means homes. Local role, so the cities and counties, they are allocated these units. They must then find ways to accommodate enough land at appropriate densities for all these different types of housing. We're talking about a whole range of apartments to townhomes to single-family detached homes. And so here you see the the number, the percent of the arena allocation that went to the different jurisdictions in the COG. And Selma got three percent, it looks like. And so let's see, yeah, one thousand four hundred and ninety-two total units. And again, this is what we have to do is evidence that there are locations where these could be accommodated when developers want to come and build those. And we have to show that these locations have adequate development standards and zoning to enable developers to be able to build these units when these projects are coming forward. So as I mentioned previously, the state equates density with potential affordability, which so that is known as the default density. And density, as you know, is really relative. If you are in a big city, density means one thing. If you're in a suburban place, it means another thing. If you're in a very rural place, density is going to look very different there. And so Selma has a default density of twenty units per acre. So what that means is a site has to allow at least twenty units per acre in order for the city to put it in the housing element as a site designated to accommodate the lower income arena. So how do we, as a big picture process, how do we meet that six-cycle arena? Well, first, we look at what sites were included in your last document. And we say to city staff there, please let us know which ones have already been developed and should come off of the list or which ones are just no longer viable. And then we we're going to ask them to help us identify new sites in addition to the ones that are left over still from last time, which can still be used. We do want to make sure we're looking at sites that are between a half acre and ten acres, particularly for the lower income arena. That's just the sweet spot for developers to be able to build something that is going to be affordable. We look at vacant and underutilized sites. So a non-vacant site that is still a good candidate for development is what we would call an underutilized site. We also can project the number of accessory dwelling units that are anticipated over the next eight years. We do that based on how many accessory dwelling units have been produced recently in Selma, and there's a methodology for extrapolating that out and being able to take credit for projected accessory dwelling units, but we don't have to identify specific sites where those might go in order to get credit for them. And then we do consider what projects are in the pipeline and any specific plans that you have that anticipate development. And we go ahead and add all those numbers up and track it against the allocation that has been given to the city to make sure that we're able to show that you can meet that. So now I'll talk about some key changes to state law that factor into this process. As I mentioned earlier, there are some new requirements related to timelines, such as making sure that the document is available to the public for a certain period of time. That came from eighty-two fifteen. And it also switched up HCD's review period a little bit more. They used to have sixty days for their initial day, initial review. And then that's now up to ninety days. And they used to have ninety days for the certification review after adoption. Now that one's sixty days. So they're trying to fine tune the process, especially with so much more content going into these documents. Their reviewers are stretched as well, so they're trying to refine their process. And so we still have the same deadline and just need to make sure we're addressing all those timelines. The AB thirteen ninety-seven is a new law that requires jurisdictions to adopt a compliant housing element within a hundred and twenty days of the deadline. And if cities and counties are not in compliance, and if they need to do any rezones to meet their arena, then those rezones would have to be completed within one year of the planning period. And then let's see, if the housing element is adopted more than one year from the element due date, well, we're going to do better than that. We're not going to put you in that situation, but just making you aware of some new laws that are effect. And then there used to be a four-year update consequence if cities and counties adopted outside of the hundred and twenty-day deadline, which that went away. AB seventy-two accountability and HCD enforcement. So again, they're just really focusing at the state level on the housing crisis and trying to find as many tools as possible to make sure that they're addressing this issue. So this is really this is the stick. This is not the carrot. And so, but again, we're going to get you a certified housing element. I'm confident of it, so we're not going to worry so much right now about any of these problems. AB thirteen ninety-seven identification of realistic sites. So this is an important one when we do the sites inventory analysis. If more than fifty percent it's actually if more than fifty percent of your lower income units are met on sites that are not vacant, then you have to show more evidence to make sure that you are really being clear about why redevelopment is likely to occur on these sites and that it's not just a bunch of smoke and mirrors. And then again, as I mentioned, sites between a half acre and ten acres is really that sweet spot. And so this is this bill also, or this law, is encouraging the use of appropriately sized sites for the lower income units. SB one sixty-six, no net loss. Essentially, in a nutshell, it's really good for you to have a surplus in your land inventory because what this is saying is that if a project comes forward and it's at a lower density than what was identified in your housing element, then if you don't have other sites that you can point to to accommodate your remaining arena, then you're going to have to identify new ones. And so we'll make sure when we're doing our analysis that we are working with staff to identify a good surplus of sites so that you don't get into the situation. SB thirty-five, application streamlining. This law applies if a number of building permits issued is less than the share of arena by income category for that reporting period. All right, more new laws. SB three thirty removes roadblocks to development. And so that is making sure that downzoning is prohibited and that subjective design standards are replaced with objective design standards rather than subjective design standards. I talked briefly previously about AB six eighty-six, affirmatively furthering fair housing. So again, we're going to assess fair housing issues, look in detail at areas of opportunity, areas of access to resources, concentrations of different protected classes. And we want to identify sites that foster an inclusive community and provide equitable access to resources, identify strategies to address barriers to fair housing and combat discrimination and displacement, and then include programs to implement these strategies. And so some of that is even initiatives to improve existing neighborhoods, other initiatives to assist people with housing mobility, which means the ability to move to a place of their choosing. So if somebody wants to continue to stay in their neighborhood, but they need to move because their household size is growing or shrinking, how easy is it for them to move and stay within their community? SB nine, housing development approvals. So this is one of the newer ones, and it's looking at, just like with accessory dwelling units, how do we, they sometimes they call it gentle density, meaning how do you add more housing within existing neighborhoods? So this just gives more tools to people to be able to do that. But we don't necessarily count these towards Rena. The the it's a new law and that part hasn't really been worked out, so we're just staying on top of it. And now I just got to the thank you slide. So we're here to answer questions and and hear your input. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you for that. Thank you for that backup presentation. You did a great job. I really appreciate your standing in there. Do we have any questions from our planning commissioners at this time? Do we have any questions from anyone on the city council? Anyone from the public? Anyone like to stand up and be heard on this topic? With that, we will bring this back. This is an informational item, so we won't be voting on this, but we thank everybody for the hard work of coming out. And Selma does have a a history with the regional housing needs allocation numbers. In two thousand and six, Selma was out of compliance, and that didn't surface. The state wasn't as much on it as they are now. And it surfaced about twelve years later that the state needed to get in line with that. So this is really important that the city get these numbers down and that all of the reporting timelines be followed. So with that, we will adjourn this joint meeting with the planning commission. You're free to stay around for the rest of the meeting. Otherwise, you are free to enjoy the rest of the rain on this evening. And we thank the planning commission for for coming out tonight and listening to this very important topic, which will help all of us in our jobs to help the citizens of Selma and move our housing forward. So thank you for coming out. Thank you. Thank you, Mandy. Appreciate everybody coming out. Thanks for your time. Hello to your parents. Bye, Johnny. Bye, Renza. Thank you. And with that, we'll start our Selma City Council regular meeting, September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. It's seven PM, not six PM. And we are in the Selma City Council chambers. The teleconference phone number is one three zero one seven one five eight five nine two. The webinar ID is eight nine one six eight six four five zero zero five. When on the phone, if you wish to address the council during the public comment portion of the agenda, press star nine to raise your hand, and we will select you from the meeting queue. Press star six to unmute. Mute yourself. This meeting is being conducted within the guidelines of AB three six one. And our invocation tonight will be led by Pastor Holsway Gravara from the Iglesia DC. Welcome, Pastor.
Welcome, and God bless. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Father, in the name of Jesus, I thank you for our city of Selma and that I am blessed with the privilege of being part of the city. I pray for every leader in this city according to First Timothy, the mayor, the city council, and all other in authority. We pray and thank you because you ask that we roll justly and with godly wisdom. So we continually pray for strength and that you would bless them. Lord, I pray according to Zechariah ten, that you will continue sending forth this rain to our city and valley. And also let it overpowering of your Holy Spirit fall on this place, overcome over this place and overcome any evil voices operating against it. Lord, we declare the city a godly city, a city where righteousness prevail. And I ask the spirits of poverty, violence, and anger, and hate, lying, and all other wrong spirits that are affecting this city to leave in the name of Jesus. I ask you, Lord of the harvest, to send forth laborers to every neighborhood, that your light shine throughout every school, storefront, and church. Let the gospel permeate in every part of the city and break through every area of darkness. I pray also, Lord, that you will bring an answer to our dear family and city, to our missing resident, young Lady Fuentes, and any other that may be. Father, we pray this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
You please stand for the pledge allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, patient under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Gera?
Here.
Councilmember Mendoz Navarro?
Here.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cho?
Here.
Mayor Robertson?
Here. Potential conflicts of interest. Any council member who has a potential conflict of interest may now identify the item and recuse themselves from discussing and voting on the matter. Oral communications. At this time, any member of the public may address the city council regarding any item over which the council has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will be taken on any item not on the agenda. Issues raised will be referred to the city manager for review. Members of the public shall limit their remarks to three minutes. To limit the liability of the city, speakers are asked to address their comments to the city council. Does anyone have any communications at this time? Do we have anybody on the phone or on Zoom?
As a reminder to the callers they see on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature, and we will add you to the meeting queue. Mayor Robertson, at this time, I see no hands raised.
Okay, thank you for that. And with that, we will move on to our special presentation tonight, which is the Fresno County Economic Development Corporation Services Presentation. Welcome. You brought the whole team.
Good evening. So thank you all so much for asking us to come and present to you. Before I start, I just say a little personal thing. I'm so excited to see Fernando sitting up there. I feel like it's my child sitting up here. Fernando used to work for me at the ADC. And as he worked his way up through your ranks here, he kept cheering for you, Fernando. And now there you are, sitting up there. So as I say, it touches my heart to see you there. So congratulations on your ascension. Today, I was sitting with my staff, and I said, okay, we're going to do this presentation to Selma. I think they've heard me a million times. Just so you all know, this month is my thirteenth anniversary at the EDC, which means I've been there forever. But I see you all, I think, every few months at the Central Valley Trading Center. So I only told my staff this morning, you all are going to do this presentation tonight because they hear me all the time. So I'm sure you all go, I'm so glad I don't work for her, right, Fernando? Because that's what I do. So we'll just start, and I'll just introduce, and then I'm going to turn it over to my staff because they're the ones that actually do the real work. So obviously, we are the Economic Development Corporation serving Fresno County. Next slide. We've been around for forty-one years. For any of you who came to our big celebration last year, For any of you who came to our big celebration last year when we celebrated the eighties and we all wore our neon clothes and celebrated the forty years. We have been around and our mission is obviously to make Fresno County the best place to do business, to raise our families, to make it the premier location to bring business. And obviously Selma is one of our jewels in, in the work that we do. You could go to the next one. So I do have a board of forty people. And everybody could tell me, that's insane, right? You have a board of forty. But this is my executive committee. So we do work in smaller groups. I have a eleven person executive committee of which we have some designated directors and the CIO of the county is one of those designated directors. And on our full board, which is the next one, we also have members from all areas of business and education and certainly members of different city councils. And what we do whenever we have a, a space available, we look at who is it that we're missing? What kind of industry should we be adding into here? We have no one missing right now. We're completely full and we do have a waiting list for people that want to come on the board, but this is our board of directors. This year, we have two people from the building trades, which in the history of the economic development organization has never happened. But we felt like that was also a missing piece is to ensure that, that we have a wide array of folks that set the vision for our next forty years. So with that, obviously I'm the president and CEO. Sheri Neal, who's our chief operating officer, I know many of you have seen her at, at a lot of our meetings. She's in Oklahoma City this week at a conference. Paul is our controller. He's back at the office because this is the time that's the busiest time for him. We have Merritt, who is here. And I know, I know she's back there somewhere. There she is. Whenever you need to make an appointment or to have her come and see us, she's the one you're going to talk to all the time. So I'm sure many of you. And our newest employee is Betty Espinoza. I think this is her third, third day. So we're not going to make her speak this time. I know I'm bad, but I'm not really that bad. So at this time, I will turn it over to Miguel. He wasn't ready, but he's ready.
Good, good evening, Council Mayor. So yeah, I wanted to introduce myself, Miguel Relas. I'm the Business Expansion and Retention Coordinator. I wanted to talk a little bit about Five Cities. Kind of in, in the way it started in nineteen ninety-eight, really is the east side cities coming together and knowing what are the common goals, what are they facing and, and you know, sharing those ideas, resources. And thus the five cities came together. And what this consists of is the board of directors, having like representatives and executive committee consisting of, you know, different city leaders. Really, it's kind of just transformed into something that's been very productive in Fresno County, specifically the east side. And even more specifically, the city of Selma. Next slide, please. And with that, a familiar face you guys might be able to recognize would be Charlene Holkeen, who is really working with the five cities. So I want to hand it off so she can talk even more about Five Cities.
Good evening. It's good to be here in person. So Five Cities, we have a couple of services that we do offer. One of them is administration. So we help with the government filing. So you are familiar with that fun seven hundred form that we file every year. Also, we help with administration with putting packets together. So every quarter, the board and executive do get a full packet. We include budgets, minutes, and then of course we are putting the logistics together for when the meeting is going to happen, what time and so forth. That helps with administration. We also have business development. So on the business development, we do have our attractions, which we help with site selection. We also have expansion and retention. And we really focus, focus on the local services for business. I know that you've been in contact with several of you to help with that, been to some different functions. The next we have capacity building and there's several things that we do under that. The grants, we helped with that several years ago. Five Cities did receive a PG&E grant, so we work collaboratively as a group to be able to help with grants. And then guest speakers. So every year when, every year we change chairs and we meet with the chairs to kind of just collaborate and get their ideas for the upcoming years, upcoming year and see what ideas they have for the five cities and promote different topics. And once we get together and decide then we go out and we contact guest speakers to come and just, you know, the experts on the topics to be able to help with that. And then we have our marketing. So we help with digital marketing, local business resources. So with the five cities, we help with all those resources that you might have, we pass it on. And then also we have the branding and I'm going to go more into that with the next slide. So as you know, Five Cities grew from five to seven. So with that, we do have, we are tasked with a rebranding. And with that rebranding, we have assisted the help of the Jeff Scott Agency. And he's really branding to work around the regional challenges and opportunities. So that was a branding that we worked with the board with. That was a process and I'm happy to report this is the new logo for the district. It's really exciting. I like the new logo. It, we wanted something that was regionally cohesive for the whole group and just really promotes the district in the group. And we wanted something to leverage the strengths of the five cities. So now we are going to be called the center point. Along with that, we are going to be doing some branding. I talked about that earlier. So we have some exciting things coming up this year. We're going to start branding the center point. The board did vote on this new logo. And we are going to start working then next year to market that. We're going to be marketing. We're going to do press release and kits. We're going to have digital marketing. And the most exciting thing is that the center point will have a microsite landing page on the EDC website. So people from outside the region, inside the region, the different cities, once they click on that, they'll be able to go each in your perspective cities and it just as a site, it encompasses all the culture for each city, for you and the rest of the cities. When you click on the map, it's going to be a foodie trail. So we all know food is, gets us all together, right? If anything doesn't, it's food. So on that map, it will, this is the different restaurants for the different areas and just really promote the different things. So you'll be hearing from me. We'll be sending that out. We just approved the logo and the new branding. So we have a lot of exciting things to do with the center point district. Thank you.
If you don't remember, it took about fifteen meetings to decide on the color.
Hey, Council, good afternoon. I'm Julian Ramos. I'm the Client Services Manager at the EDC. I've been here for about two and a half years. My background is in retail and commercial banking. My personal background, though, I was born right down the street at Selma Hospital and spent the first five years of my life right over on Jasper Street. And Mayor Pro Tim, I, I feel like I should thank you. Cho's was the first place my parents met. So the, Selma's near and dear to my heart. Part of the team is, is not here unfortunately. Tiffany Luke, as Leanne mentioned earlier, we have a International Economic Development Council annual conference in Oklahoma City. So she and Sheri Neal and our Economic Development Specialist Jackie Cuevas are attending this week. Together Tiffany and I put together competitive business attraction proposals. We try to reach out to businesses that you'll, you'll meet Chris shortly. Chris and his team say, hey, the data is pointing us in these industries or these businesses. Let's go out and reach, reach out to them. We put together these customized packets that include anything from real estate opportunities, local incentives, grant information, you know, quality of life, la- labor and wage comparisons, whatever, whatever we need to do to market Selma as kind of the ideal place for this business. We can move to the next slide, please. Thank you. I mentioned real estate opportunities just a moment ago. As you can see on the slide, Selma's got a pretty high vacancy rate in terms of industrial. So that's where we focus our, our work is to be completely honest with you, you've got the availability that most, most other cities don't. So we like to showcase that. Not necessarily the case for office and, and retail, but that's okay. You guys have been doing a great job attracting, you know, national brands to the area, Selma crossings, Selma Grove, I think. And that's been great. And we're, we're committed to helping with that work. As I mentioned, data driving kind of our play, what we're doing, who we're looking for. Again, Leanne mentioned IEDC's annual convention. Part of what our team there is doing is learning about economic opportunities, transformational changes in, in smaller communities. We think those are valuable tools for city Selma specifically. So that's our commitment. We're looking forward to seeing Selma grow. And I think with that, I can bring up, yeah, Miguel again. Thanks, Council.
Again, so I'm going to introduce the team I work with on a day to day basis. Very closely, we have Marcela, Laura and Darian Galindo, who are our retention specialists, working with businesses specifically in the new employment opportunities program, the NEO program. And we also have Charlene Holkeen, who I already introduced, and Jackie, Jackie Cuevas, who are economic development specialists. Jackie Cuevas is also not with us. She's in Oklahoma IEDC. So she'll be bringing a lot of that information, soaking that in and bringing that back for the team to kind of learn as well. Next slide, please. So what we do in the Business Expansion and Retention Team, we really connect with the local businesses here to find out where they're at in the lifespan of their business, see what opportunities and what resources are available for them so that we can connect them and kind of let them know what's available and take full advantage of what's out there. I've been doing so in the last three years, we're able to connect local businesses and just Selma alone with the, with rage reimbursements with NEO and the hub grant. We're able to generate a hundred ninety-four thousand dollars just in the past three years, which we know, you know, the last three years were a little, a little unique there. And so being able to help out and bring that to, to businesses here in Selma had, you know, been significantly beneficial to Selma. Next slide, please. And getting to know the businesses in Selma, I mean, and really everywhere we're hearing it all around is what are the issues that they're facing? And that's the workforce. So in response to that, Fresno EDC has partnered up with the Department of Social Services, not only with the NEO program, but with the truck driver training and the Valley Apprenticeship Connections, connecting those on welfare to these better skilled programs so they can upscale and find better jobs that pay typically a little bit higher than they would normally find elsewhere. And so that's kind of the reaction, right? You hear what the issue is, what the need is, and then we kind of develop something so that we can fulfill those needs. And so far it's, it's been working out well. We just started, we just had the ribbon cutting for the truck driving training programs. Really generated a lot of lead there. We've gotten calls from people in Guatemala interested in the truck driving program. So you know, we're, we're really bringing those up and we'll talk a little bit more about how those are going to expand at the end of the presentation. And but with that, I want to introduce my colleague, Chris Sights.
Next slide, please. My name is Chris Sights. I'm sure most of you are familiar with Will Oliver, who I unfortunately, well, fortunately for him, is at a conference at the London School of Economics. So a lot of our team is out of town. And for that reason, you're going to just have to deal with me. I'm the Special Projects Coordinator. Pinch hitting for Will again. I'll try and do my best. Next slide, please. But as it's been said by my colleagues, we, we invest in data and an in-house data team to drive our day-to-day activities. A few examples of that Julian alluded to is analyzing the availability and, and needs of businesses that are considering our county. And then we also help that team with presenting the most competitive information we can to try and bring businesses here. In the case of our expansion and retention team. Oh, sorry about that. And normally I don't have to be told to be louder. And in terms of helping our expansion and retention team, we look at what in, how industries are doing during the pandemic. Of course, there was a lot of labor market data that was really important for us to, to take a look at and analyze and provide to our teams. So they would know as they're talking to businesses, they wouldn't know necessarily how that business was doing, but they would have a rough idea about how that industry was doing. And so they could bring that and, and that information into how they support that team, I'm sorry, that business. We also assist with performance monitoring on these workforce programs that we've mentioned briefly tonight and we'll continue to talk about in a moment. Next slide, please. We're a part of the Fresno Drive Initiative and the part that we have really is based on reimagining economic development. And as part of that project, we have a partnership dating back to two thousand and twenty with the Impact Baited Accounts Initiative at Harvard Business School. Essentially that group at Harvard is trying to bring additional indicators to, to business decision makers to help them understand the total impact of their business operations. It's been a really helpful partnership. We take that information that we've been learning from that and we, when we present that to state decision makers sometimes. In the case of the most recent Cal Competes Grant, and it wasn't a tax credit, it was a grant. We noticed that a disproportionate amount of the funding had gone to Bay Area locations that had relatively low unemployment. And so we presented that when we had the opportunity to state level decision makers and we'll see if what we shared had any effect in the next grant round, which just closed up a little over a month ago. Next slide, please. But essentially with our pilot initiative in Fresno's Drive Initiatives, we're trying to, within partnership with the Harvard team, we're trying to show the impacts that high quality jobs have, especially in a, in a, in an area that has higher unemployment or higher rates of poverty and also impact from products. So like we, we bring perspective to that team such as water conservation or improving agricultural productivity, really trying to regionalize some of the best research when it comes to impact focused economic development. Next slide, please. And with that, I'll pass it back to our CEO and President Leanne Eager.
Thank you. So obviously I think you realize we do economic development a little bit different at the EDC. You know, we look, we have been looking for the past probably six, seven years about really having it be data driven. So the Chris's team back here, my Spencer and Ross over here, Spencer and Ross, the team. Those are the ones that they sit behind that computer and they bring up all the numbers. And then they tell Julian and I, yes, go after that industry. Or when I say, can I go to Chile? And they go, no, nothing's happening there. You can't go there, but you should be going to Germany because that, the, the people who are, are doing work in Germany really match up with what we're doing here. So we really look at data and how we should do economic development. So I wanted to make sure you met them. I think most of you probably know, two and a half years ago, I was appointed to the California Transportation Commission. I was one of those COVID commissioners, so I never met another human being for about two years. We did it all online and then maybe because they hadn't met me, I don't know, they did vote me in chair this year. So in January, I was voted chair of the commission. And the reason that that's important is because I'm the only person from the Central Valley on the California Transportation Commission. The California Transportation Commission funds roads, bridges, transit, everything that you see that Caltrans is doing, every time you see that, oh, this is funded by SB one, that has to go through the commission in order to get that funded. So when money comes through and they say, oh, you know, gosh, should we put another lane on the four oh five in LA? And I say, hell no. What we really need is to finish the ninety-nine. Let's make sure that the money comes to the valley that's been left behind for so long. So you might have seen recently the forty-one south going to the coast where people died all the time. It was one of the most dangerous areas because it went from four lanes to two lanes to four lanes. It had been in the queue to be funded for twenty-two years. Had been in the queue. So we said, no, you're going to fund that now because it's a safety issue. Because we're not willing to be at the back of the queue anymore. We're going to be at the front of the queue. So it's fully funded now. You might see when you drive to Pismo that now there's a divider in between. That's temporary because now we're building the four lanes all the way. So those twelve miles will now be additional for. That's temporary because now we're building the four lanes all the way. So those twelve miles will now be additional four lanes. The ninety nine going north used to be when you came through Selma and you went to Fresno, went pretty good. And then you get to Madera, it goes like this, and we all stop. And Madera, go a little bit faster, then you get to Merced and you stop again. That is also funded now. That's been in the queue for fifteen, twenty years. That will continue to be finished. We're not allowed to say expanding, but we are finishing ninety nine and we are ensuring that it is the safest way to get people and products up and down the ninety nine, and that's economic development. So I think when the governor looked at, what are we missing on the C T C? They said, there's nobody working on economic development. There's nobody from the valley. So Congressman Costa said, oh, I got somebody. So now that's me. So I will continue to advocate on behalf of all of us here in the Central Valley and especially our Fresno County folks. Can go to the next slide. The other really exciting thing that you might have heard is that about a year and two months ago, the federal government put out this R F P that said we're going to put out a whole bunch of money in the United States to help in economic development and workforce development and join the two. And so we looked at it and said, yeah, we should probably apply for that, you know, probably chances are slim and none that we would get it because it's across the entire country. And the highest that you could apply for is twenty five million. And so Chris and Will and I got together and they said, what do you think we should buy for? And I said, let's go for it. Let's apply for the whole darn thing. So for a year, we brought together all kinds of partners, of which Selma is one. And we said, what is it that we need to do to ensure that all of our businesses and the businesses we're bringing in have people that can do all those jobs? That the people who want the jobs also have all the services in order to help them get them, whether it's training, whether it's daycare, whatever those supportive services are, we want all of that. So we wrote the grant. And then we waited for nine months. And we said, okay, well, we we did our best shot. And then we started to get information requests from the federal government saying, oh, can you send us some more information about this and some more information about that? And then about a month ago, I was getting text messages at four o'clock in the morning from Washington D C. And I said, that's gotta be a good sign. I gotta knock on wood somewhere. It's gotta be a good sign. And then about a month ago, three weeks ago, we got that call that said the federal government's decided to fund thirty across the entire country, two in California. And we were one of them. And we got twenty three point one million dollars, the highest of any of those folks that got funded. And we celebrated and we had champagne and then we said, oh, shoot. Now we got to do this. Now we gotta put this together. But looking at all of the things that are happening right now in infrastructure transportation money coming to the Central Valley and money coming from the state. We we got some additional money from the feds. We got this twenty three million dollars. Another group on the other side of Build Back Better got another sixty million dollars, all coming to Fresno County. I mean, we're talking a close to a hundred million dollars. This is this time that we can do a lot of great work and that we're we're so grateful for the partnership of all of our cities in Fresno County that helped us get this. And we have three or four months to plan it. So we'll be calling on all of you saying, help us. We we got to get this going. We got to hire about eight new people. So if you know any really good people, please send them our way. We promise we won't poach anyone, but but we're we are hiring. So please keep us in mind as you go forward. And of course, last but not least, next slide, we continue to celebrate our Central Valley Training Center right here in Selma. And those of you who were at our our meeting last week, we know all the great work that's happening here. We're going to be expanding with this Good Job Challenge money that opens up a a whole new life for us. So we're hoping to bring in new trainers. We're hoping to expand our truck driver training into other cities. And so we know that our rural communities also need truck drivers and bus drivers and all of those kinds of things. And our Good Jobs Challenge money will allow us to do that. But obviously, Central Valley Training Center has been a dream of mine for about twelve years. And you were the first folks that we came to and said, you want to dream with us. So we wanted to close with certainly thanking all of you for continuing this partnership and continuing to to dream all the dreams that we have to make this a better place for all of us. So thank you. I'm willing to answer any questions.
Council, have any questions for Leanne, E D C team? Anybody from the public have any questions for the E D C team? Come on up, sir.
Congratulations. Jim Avol, seventeen oh one Dinuba. I know this young lady. She's very innovative, I should say, very innovative person. When I first met her, I said, oh, my God, this woman's driven. And you could tell what she's about. She's she's about helping the valley and how to get funds for the valley and keep economic going in this in our California. And I have to take off my hat and say, hey, I'm glad you're here in California. I'm glad you're part of the team in the valley. And I think and this young lady went to Washington D C. She, no one did she, she's she's a go getter. Trust me. Thank you. And your team is, thank you. I thank the team behind you. Thank you, guys. You're doing an amazing job. I could tell by by looking at your smiling faces. You're good workers. Because I know what she's about. Thank you for what you do. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments this time? That we will bring it back. I've got a question for you, Leanne. So we're working on the Golden State Corridor project, the forty three million dollar Measure C, which is going to go even if Measure C doesn't get renewed or gets renewed, which we hope it does in November. But the question I have is how can the E D C help Selma to leverage those three city opportunities to unlock that transportation component of this great new corridor that's going to be in Selma? What's, you have a plan for that?
Yeah, no, that is exciting. And and certainly when we've looked, I think we did a study maybe about five years ago of what that looks like on that quarter and what we should be bringing. Once that opens up and we have more availability. So I think we should shake that out, bring it on back, look at updating it. So we can see what it is that would be best. And now that we have these two wizards that we can put them on that too, we absolutely, we're all in to to help build that area.
That sounds great because there are going to be some real opportunities there to get people off the ninety nine and get them into our cities. And for, you know, inner city transportation between the three cities is going to be really important and a great opportunity. You know, whether it's, I don't know, cars, monorail, something, we just have to dream big and think big, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. We, I was just talking to the governor's office this morning about not forgetting our rural cities in California because, you know, it's get out of your cars. And, you know, I said, oh, yeah, come on your get on your bicycles and drive our six thousand square miles. Yeah, come on out. But I said, we do need more transit money. We do need that money to be able to dream. So this these next fifteen, twenty years that we all have that opportunity to be able to get people off of that ninety nine and put them out into our cities and you know, I would love to have light rail going from city to city out here, right? And 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 building up those industries around that light rail and people can work right close to the place where they can get on the light rail and go from place to place. So I'm dreaming right there with you.
Sounds great. Thank you for that. Thank you for everything you do. Council have anything else they'd like to say? Thanks. Have a great evening. Thanks for coming now. I really appreciate it. Oh, yeah, you guys want to come up and we'll get a photo op with the council? Buddy. Yeah, we've been at it for a while. We've had a couple of presentations now, so why don't we take a seven minute break and come back at seven forty five?
I
Right, we're gonna get back in session now. Okay, with that, we are back in session. After our last special presentation, we'll move on to the consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar category are considered routine. The complete consent calendar will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote. For purposes of discussion, any council member may have an item removed from the consent calendar and made part of the regular agenda. The council can then approve the remainder of the consent calendar. Does council have any items they would like to take off of the consent calendar tonight?
Mayor, I'm taking off item E.
Okay, and I'll take off item D. Does anyone have any additional items they'd like to take off? There are a motion to approve items one A through C.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendez Navarro?
Yes.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cho? Mayor Robertson?
Yes. Okay, item D, consideration of amendment two to the professional services agreement with Yamabi and Horn Engineering for interim city engineering services. So the question I have tonight is, it's a pretty dramatic uptick in engineering costs. It looks like it's going to five hundred and forty thousand. Is that for the total of the year from July one to July to January or July to July?
Yeah, so that that would actually, that would be the total cost included within the contract, which would actually go even outside of that time. So it's the the amended item that we'd be looking at to to cover with Yamabi and Horn. While it does go up considerably, I think it is very important to notate that the majority of those items are reimbursable dollars when you're talking projects that are going to be funded through transportation projects and items of that nature, also through various applications. also through various application fees and inspection fees that are paid. We are seeing a significant amount of activity that is happening within the community, which is a great thing. It took a long time to really get caught up, of course, to to get us to this point. But we're also seeing a lot of items moving forward actively all at the same time, so.
So the Barbara Street, the roads, the road improvement, is that one of those items? I think that was block grant money or LTF local transportation fund money. Is that going to be included? Would that be an example of something that would be covered?
That would be, that would be an example of something that could be reimbursable expense when included within that contract that takes place, correct?
What would you say the percentage of that total five hundred and forty thousand dollar limit would be reimbursable under other sources of funds?
I, I think, I think a conservative estimate to that would likely be around seventy-five percent.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we certainly do have some costs that are not reimbursable, which of course we would see even with full-time staff.
Has there been any luck in recruiting a full-time engineer? Not that Yamabi and Horn is not doing a great job, it's just terms of the dollars. And I think they're the, Phil's the first one to say it would make sense for the city to have a full-time engineer, especially with the volume of work. Is that coming along?
It, it is. We have been actively working on that. We're working with RGS as the group right now that is working to help us with our recruitment. We're actually looking for an engineering technician position first, that would be the person more of the technical staff that's gonna be onsite. And then as soon as we have that person in place, we'll go out for the full recruitment of the city engineer. The reason why we're looking to do that is to really have some of that consistency to come in place, be working directly with Yamabi and Horn right now to start taking a lot of those day-to-day in-office type of activities, coordinating project management, inspection services, someone to have a really good feel of that day-to-day scheduling item. Then when you have that city engineer come in, they can really hit the ground running on the overall management and administrative duties that come along with that.
That's good. Thank you. Item E? Or do you wanna, is there a motion to, okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember, councilmember Trujillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoz Navarro?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cho?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes, item E.
Okay. On page eighty-six, I just have one here, check number eight zero two-two-six. And it looks like it's for Cooks Communication Corp., light bar and siren installation. I believe it shows. I think it's eleven thousand six hundred and seventy, is it right?
I believe that that would be for modifications to the fire department trucks, vehicles for the division chiefs and the fire chief light bars and that kind of equipment.
Light bar sounds, and that's not reimbursed?
No, that was previously budgeted.
Okay.
I got one, page eighty-seven, eight zero two-eight-one. Fico Industries Inferno cutoff and grinding wheels? Do you know what that is?
That is actually gonna be a public works supply item there. That has to do with they are currently working right now on a lot of the storm sewer systems and some of the abandoned wells that we have right now to cap them off and to ensure that they are secured properly and that they're not a safety concern right there. So they needed some supplies there to be able to prep some of those items as they're getting ready to put those caps in place there.
Got it. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve item E?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoz Navarro?
Yes.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cho?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes, now we'll move on to regular business and our first order of business, item three, is going to be consideration of funding for the prayer run for Jelissa.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. During the oral communications earlier in this meeting, the council voted to add this as an emergency item to the agenda for consideration of a fee waiver for the Jelissa Flintas run that would be originating in Fresno at the Cornerstone, Cornerstone Church. And I believe the request was made to end at either Schaefer Park or a similar-sized park like Brett Linger. And our community services director can meet with the family to discuss that final destination, but at this point, under consideration would be the fee waiver. And I don't know what that fee amount would be at this point.
Basically, we have to look at everything that they're gonna be going over, whether they need the sound permit, whether they need the special event, all of those sort of things. Off the top of my head, I don't, Chief, do you remember what that final paperwork was? I, it just crossed our offices, so I haven't had a chance to in-depth look at that.
So we can approve it and you can just get the numbers together.
But we can approve it retroactive to the, to the exact numbers that come back at the next council meeting?
So question is, can we approve this with the understanding that staff can go back and get the numbers or do we have to put a number to it? Okay.
As long as you do that, you know, on the record stating that it's with that understanding is fine.
Okay.
So is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve it with understanding that staff will go and speak with the family and make the adjustments.
And I'll second it.
Okay, call the roll, please. I'm sorry, I didn't open this up to the public before we vote. Would anyone from the public like to make a comment at this time? Please come up.
Appreciate you hearing us out for this. It's really important, not only to the family, but to us that this goes through as planned. Just a couple of things I wanted to point out that I didn't get to get to earlier. For first off, we're not selling anything at this event. It's, it's completely, everything that we're getting together is gonna be donated. All the people participating, the registration fee is a donation. That's all taking place in Fresno at the Cornerstone Church parking lot. Again, the church is not sponsoring it. They're not associated with it. They're just letting us use their lot. And then from then on again, those are donations. When they come to the park, whichever park we are approved to use in Selma, we're giving out burritos to anyone that did donate. It's, it's like a gift for donating. Same thing with the drinks that will come with it. It's all free. There's nothing being sold. We do plan on, like I said, there will be corporate prayer taking place. We plan on bringing, you know, just a little speaker with mics attached that somebody is letting us use. So we would need power, but if there is no power available, we can bring a generator. Let's see, so also, I'm not sure about the parks. I'm not familiar with the parks here, but whichever park we would use, I'm not sure if they all have restrooms and if those are stock. That's just something we've considered. We know that there has been car shows recently here in Selma and there were cars and other vehicles allowed to park on the grass. So we wanted to know if that's a possibility. And then I know that it does matter as far as if there's any other events already reserved at the certain parks that, you know, we're better in question. We just wanna make sure that we're following all the proper procedures and again, getting your blessing and approval. So we appreciate it. And if there's any questions before you guys vote, I'm, you know, happy to answer. We've been working on this for a few weeks and again, we just wanna make sure that we do everything correctly and just do what we can for the family. So I thank you.
Thank you. So before we vote, are we waiving the fact that the nonprofit status of the the group applying, are they going to be applying under the Selma Business Alliance?
I'm taking the, I'm taking the instructions from our attorney that we can make this and we put on the agenda through a special enforcement. So that's why, and that's what I'm taking. That's why I'm making the motion to let the staff talk to the family with the understanding that we got representation from our attorney to tell us we could put it on the agenda as a special item and I'm approving it as a special item.
Okay, let's, just the detail is, is council approving the fact that an individual can be applying for this as opposed to, and a waiver can be applied for as opposed to a nonprofit applying for it? Because the current policy of the city is for fee waivers to be granted to nonprofits.
Right. Well, number one, just for the sake of the record, as council member mentioned, you know, the specific code section that allowed the city council to take this up, you know, that so it could be recorded in the minutes is government code section fifty-four, nine fifty-four point two subsection B. So that's, you know, the three options that I mentioned, and this is the immediate action that's needed since this came to light after the agenda was posted. In regards to the second point about council clarifying, that's really a policy call for the council to make if it wants to deviate from the policy. Because I'm understanding, Mayor, that the, the policy is that a nonprofit is usually the only one that could receive that waiver, right?
That's the policy, right.
So the council could, could deviate from that right now?
And does that need to be part of the motion?
It, it might be better to do that separately, maybe, I don't know, of two motions. But I mean, number one, number one, it's already been added to the agenda, correct?
So would they need to make findings, you know, that it's an emergency and that it's a public benefit item and that sort of thing that they would normally make?
You wouldn't really need to make findings? That's a good question. Really, the Brown Act says that, you know, if you're going to add it to the agenda, which you already did, you know, the vote needs to be a majority vote, which it was. At this point, you know, you're already discussing it and you're about to take, take the vote to, you know, whatever the motion is. But it really, I think the answer that I have is that if you want to deviate from that policy to allow a fee waiver for an individual, that's, that's completely a policy choice for the council to make right now.
If, if.
Council, we're considering it as an emergency.
And.
Do we have?
It was added as an immediate, yeah.
From my understanding, we, we discussed it with, with our council and that's the reason why we backed up the motion. Because we were told that if it was, if we viewed it as an emergency item that was not agenda, agendaized, we would go back and agendaize it, vote to make sure that we put it on the agenda. So now we're here discussing it. We've had testimony. So now we've made a motion in a second. So we followed the Brown Act rules, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so my, my motion still stands.
But we didn't address the fact that the app, the applying party, whether or not they have to be a nonprofit or an individual.
But we're talking two different.
Oh, if I may, the city attorney clarified that because it's a policy choice and that that has already been established and you can take up the motion as is and, and deviate from the policy with a simple vote, motion.
After this most, after this vote, you're saying it has to be separate?
To be separate?
Does that have to be a separate vote after this or can it be an amended motion?
Please, is there a motion on the floor right now?
There is, there's a first and a second.
I made a motion to approve, I, I made a motion to go ahead and approve our staff, direct our staff to speak with the family and organize the event because that we agendaized this item. So it makes it proper through the Brown Act violations. And we are discussing it. We've had oral communication, which another point for our Brown Act violation. So now we made a motion in a second. So I don't see any reason for us to go back and actually discuss if there are non-profiting that. The, from what I understand, what you read to us in regards to the law, it stipulates that there was an emergency item that was not agendized and we agendized it and we voted on the agendizism on the dais. So now we're voting, we're voting to put it and to have it as a an event.
Right, I think we all wanna waive the fees, but we also wanna do it the right way. Because we're a city, right? And we wanna do it the right legal way. So I wanna make sure that we're doing it the right way and that, you know, if we have to have a separate vote to make, to waive the, the policy for this one time to deviate, then we can do that and that's clean. And I think you're saying.
That would be the, that would be the most cleanest conservative way to do it.
I would like to pull my motion and I would like to make a motion to have this item to have an understanding that a not nonprofit organization will have an emergency event at the city of Selma with a direction to meet with staff and organize the event. That's the first motion. I make that motion. Is that okay or? That cover?
That.
Your, your. The fees come back next, then the next motion, right? Because we're.
You get it all together in one, you could throw it in there or do it two separate motions, whatever.
Do we have to remove the, the first motion? Does the first motion have to be withdrawn? Is the second withdrawn?
He did withdraw, but I'm, but in terms of what he just said, that could, he didn't mention the fee waiver parts, that could be done separate.
You know, we have to do it separate or can we do it all at one time?
You could do it either way. I mean, really, from, from my perspective, you guys have gotten to this point properly. Everything's good. In terms of placing it on the agenda, right now, really, it's just a matter of how, what you wanna include in your motion and how you wanna, how you wanna word it. I think right now there's, there's a motion on the floor, right?
Well, from what I, from understanding, from understanding, the mayor, the mayor's concerned that the, the, the prop, the process of not having a nonprofit organization have an event in our park. Okay, so prior to that, we discussed with you and how to put it on the agenda because it's a non-agenda item and you discussed with us and you let us know that if we viewed it an emergency item, we could place it on the agenda. So we viewed it and we discussed it and we voted on it. That's why it's on the agenda and we're discussing it now.
Yes, we all agree with that.
Okay, so now the next step is we had public comments come into us. That, that also covers the Brown Act. Right?
Yes, the public's always allowed to, to make comments on, on a.
So now, so now I made, my first motion was to approve and have direct staff to approve this so they can have an event. The mayor was concerned, are we violating or are we not following the process? So I was withdrawing that and stating that I would like to actually first vote to make sure this item is placed back on the agenda that it's a non, nonprofit, not nonprofit organization. And we're still gonna prove it to it, to it, to a participant in one of our parks. That'll be the first motion.
And include the free waiver and let's just get it over and done with.
Okay, I would like to include the free waiver and I, my motion stands.
And I second it.
But we're approving the fee waiver and we're deviating from the policy that the applicant has to be a nonprofit. Simple, right? Yalaluya. Yes. Call the roll, please. Well, thank you.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoz Navarro?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cho?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Absolutely. And good luck. Let's bring Jelissa home. Here, everybody. Let's you. Okay, with that, we'll move on to our originally scheduled item three, which is now item four. Consideration of a resolution approving final parcel map twenty-two-one dash zero zero one-four.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This item before you today is for council's consideration to approve final parcel map twenty-two-one dash zero zero one-four. The tentative map here was approved by the Selma City Council on June twentieth of twenty-twenty-two. It consists of four legal parcels on roughly six point three-five gross acres. It is located on the northeast corner of McCall and Dinuba Avenue. Since the time that that was approved tentatively, they have worked with the city engineer and their engineering group to put together their final map to ensure conformance to the boundaries, the public estimate locations, the dedications, closer calculations and all of the technical data that goes along with the middle of a final map to make those legalized parcels. At this time, we're not including a subdivision improvement agreement with this final map request and that is because there is not an actual development proposal that is ready to come forward at this time. However, when a development proposal does come forward, all of the conditions of approval that are associated with the tentative approval will be required at that time. And any type of improvements required, of course, would have to be done through the appropriate bounding there. And everything approved, those conditions of approval will all be applicable. Whether all four of those parcels are developing at the same time or they develop one at a time, all of the conditions will be applicable to that. So I think that's very important to, to point out there. At this time, the, the contract city engineer has determined that the map submitted is in substantial conformance with the tentative map that was approved by council. And because of that, it is being delivered to city council for your consideration for approval of the final map at this time.
Great, thank you, Deputy City Manager. Are there any comments from the council at this time? If we have any comments from anyone who's here tonight, like to say anything? Come on.
On this particular item, on this partial map, you can approve it. It's not, just all it is is the map. It's nothing in stone right now. But I would put the guidelines when we do approve this map, make sure that we have the conditions on, on. Uh, make sure that we have the conditions on, on, on the improvements on the road, traffic signal, and who's going to pay for that? If you subdivide it, we have to make sure that who's responsible on this issue. Oh, sorry, sorry. Yeah, who's responsible on this issue as far as development, as far as the. Ex, the telephone poles, the, the underground situation and everything. It should be, uh, in the guidelines of the, uh, approval when, when they do come to the, they do it, uh. Put an approval map on, on record. Uh, we should let them know that this is, this is what you're going to have to do. Before you, uh, do the tentative map. And that way they're well aware of the cost factors and everything. So, uh, and their responsibilities. Cause a lot of times they come in with the ten, oh, I can't do it. You know, uh, but and they, they beg you, we don't have the money, but city can't do it, guys. Uh, we're not a bank. Uh, we're here to facilitate some of the issues, uh, as far as development. And, uh, that's all I got to say. Okay, guys, this is the future of the city, but you gotta. As a, as citizens, as people and the citizens here, we watch what you're doing as far as the city's taxpayer dollars, okay?
Any other public comment at this time? We have anybody on Zoom or on the phone would like to say anything on this topic?
As a reminder to the caller, I see on Zoom, if you'd like to be added to the meeting queue, please use your raise your hand feature.
Okay.
Mayor Robertson, at this time, I see no hands raised.
All right, thank you. With that, we'll bring it back to the council for questions or comments.
I have a question, um, Deputy City Manager. Any, uh, update on the signal light there for the Dinuba McCall?
Uh, as far as the actual placement, uh, it's currently going through all of its design right now. There is fair share for payment of all of those items that is applied to all of the projects that have been approved at that location. And this would include identification within the conditions of approval for this, this project here. Um, associated with the approval of its tentative map and the conditions associated within that. Which just to ensure that the comment that was made there, all of those conditions of approval were already approved by the council. And are applicable to anyone who develops on this site following final map process.
So now instead of one person or one owner developing the land, now you could potentially have four.
Uh, the very well, yeah, we very well could, but the conditions of approval would apply to anyone looking to.
Their fair share of paying for the stoplight and I think there's an undergrounding requirement for a telephone pole, is that right?
There is, that is correct. All along the entire, um, project site, the frontage of the entire site.
Okay, alright.
I have a question real quick. Um, I think, I think Councilman Gara was alluding to the, uh, McCall and Dinuba stoplight. Where, 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 um, Dinuba and McCall. So that stoplight, I know that we were, we have. Do, do we have the tentative agreement with the past engineer? Are we, have we moved through that stage and are we still on?
We have, they are actively designing that right now.
That's.
Yep. In fact, we just met with them last week and everything remains on schedule.
Good, thank you.
Any further comments? Or a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Final map?
Final map.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Council member Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Cho?
Yes.
Council member Gara?
Yes.
Council member Trujillo?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson.
Yes, item four, I have a request to continue public hearing. To consider ordinance to establish the Selma Downtown Business Improvement District. Report, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Um, apologize you've had to hear my voice so much tonight. We'll try to make this one as quick as we possibly can. Um, I, for a lot of the details here, I'm going to hand this one off to Amy Smart, who has had the, really the day-to-day, um. Uh, sleeves rolled up, um, feet on the ground involvement in the process much more than I have. And so I think it's really, really important. That that background and the efforts that have been put into place thus far are, are shared by Amy, so I'm going to hand it to Amy.
Thank you.
Mayor and council members, uh, good to see you guys tonight. I did want to talk a little bit about this. Um, we had previously noticed that we would come to you today with obviously this information, um, for approval. However, we are not quite full, um, with the actual committee members. And in my professional opinion, anytime that I ask the council to approve something, I want to make sure that we have full data for you guys to approve. And not approve partial of it. We've spent the last few weeks working with business owners. Um, trying to get more people to apply for this committee for this. Um, unfortunately, we are not yet at the amount and number of, of participants that we are looking for. Um, so we've, uh, met with our previous committee, um, that has started with this and our consultant at the time. And we're working on a new plan to kind of see if we can get some more interest on this. Unfortunately. Time commitment seems to be a big thing for a lot of our downtown businesses. Um, so we kind of are working on some plans on how we can generate excitement. Um, through some potential events and things like that moving forward. Um, our thought process is because this is a process that has taken some time. Um, I think we need to show them some of the work that we can do, um, and kind of generate that excitement. So at this time, we're asking to continue it. Um, so that we can bring a full committee and a full report for you guys to approve at that time. And, uh, we hope to bring that back by October third.
And I would just highlight, uh, Mayor, my apologies for, for the interruption. I would just want to highlight that. All of the legal requirements for the actual district itself to be formed are absolutely in place and remain very, um, current and solid. We simply did not want to bring the item to council to form the district. And not immediately have a committee that could actively bring recommendations and, and needs to the council. Um, so it's, it's not a question of whether or not there's, there's any concern about the formation of the district. It's just making sure the committee members in place. Um, to, to serve in that district and to give those recommendations to council.
And I guess that's the question I have. You know, it's, this is, everything's formed. The actual form is there. And including the committee, we just don't have the sufficient number of committee members yet. But that's coming, so why wouldn't we approve this or not approve it or vote on it tonight? You know, even though there aren't the number of committee members quite yet for that, since it's coming.
Well, historically speaking, with a lot of these, these programs and such, you really like, like Deputy City Manager said. We really want to make sure that we have that committee in place so that we can begin taking action on that. Anytime that's left where we're floating. Um, is just time where, you know, you start to run into problems with perception. Um, with people not wanting to get involved because they're not really sure of the entire process. When you guys form, we really want the committee to be able to sit here, be a part of that process. They get that buy-in, you know, as well as I do. It's very important. That they feel like they're a part of the process. So we can form the bid. You absolutely can make that decision tonight. If you would, if you would like to, we can make those. Um, you guys can make that decision. However, it's usually in the best interest to have the committee fully, um, here. To be a part of that process as they move forward so that they can be more effective, um, in those, in those coming weeks now. Again, for this one, we're, we're, we're about halfway to our committee. So we're, we're getting close. Um, and that's why we felt if we can hold off until October third, it just makes more sense to have a fully committee formed at that time. So that's the one time that we can talk about it.
So there are three, um, but to have a quorum, do the bylaws say five or seven?
We would need four to have a quorum.
Four, okay, so you need at least one more applicant.
Exactly. And that's, and because we're so close, if we were farther out, this might be a different conversation. But we feel by October third, we, I, I, we do have some people that are showing interest. We felt that it was better to just wait until they were apart, so we could bring this to. In one package and you guys could sign off on it at that time.
I just, I, um, I'd like to say a couple of things in regards to that. I know the mayor and myself and, uh, we all have businesses in the word downtown. I think we're, we're more emotionally into it and wanting to get, get it done, right? But I think I can, I could hear your, um, your, your explanation. I think it, it warrants the, you know, to give it a little more time. But I, I think that, I think we as, as business owners need to advocate and get out there and ask businesses, hey, step up a little. Cause, you know, we're stepping up, but we need to get people to step up a little more. So I'll do my part, I'll do my part. Actively ask more businesses to go out there and possibly go out there, but it is hard because some of the businesses, you know, they're mama papa businesses and. They've have family and they, so I can understand that too. Thank you.
Other comments? We have any comments from the folks who are here tonight or still here? Do we have anybody on the line? On Zoom?
As a reminder to the caller, I see on Zoom, if you'd like to be added to the meeting queue, please use your raise your hand feature. Mayor Robertson, at this time, I see no hands raised.
Okay, so we'll bring this back. So the request to continue, do we need a vote to continue a public hearing or do we just?
I would, I would recommend it. I would recommend it so that it's clear on the record that it's being continued.
Is there a motion to continue the public hearing till October third?
Make a motion to continue to October third.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Call the roll, please.
Council member Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
Council member Garrett?
Yes.
Council member Trujillo?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Cho?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson.
Yes. Okay, we'll move on from this to the departmental reports. City Manager Santian.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Just a couple of items. Um, at the last city council meeting, uh, the mayor, uh, asked for. An item to be agendized with regard to the body cams and, um, we were planning on adding it to the, the current agenda. However, we received word that, um, as of nine, uh, September thirtieth, we would know whether the grant that we applied for. For the body cam grant would be, would be awarded, um, was awarded to the city or not. So we plan to come back in, in October with that agenda item once we have more information about that grant. So just an update about that. Um, and then I want to give a, just a quick shout out to our finance department. Uh, we had a bit of a, um, emergency. Uh, an issue with the bank, uh, on Friday with our payroll where, um, some of our di- direct deposits were not going out. But our finance department on payroll, um, technician Tracy Kabatic, um, and, and a lot of our other team. Uh, Reyna and Tiffany and Inez, uh, we all pulled together to make sure that all of our staff got paid. Um, despite that issue with the bank. So just wanted to give a quick shout out to all the hard work that the finance department has put in. Thank you.
Very important to get those checks in. All right, um, our interim city attorney, Yannis, anything to report tonight?
Nothing to report, just, um, thank you all for this opportunity. Um, it's good and I think that I share a passion, you know, with you all, um, to see our cities and, and the valley thrive. I'm a native of Madera and, um, you know, I spent a lot of time in Southern California, but, um. I'm happy to be back and planted, you know, here in the valley and I'm raising kids here in the valley too. And so I'm committed to seeing, uh, our cities thrive. So, thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Best of luck. And then, uh, we were going to move on to our deputy city manager, Terry.
Nothing to report, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. And our police chief, Rudy Alcaraz.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'll make it quick. Uh, we continued work to Jelissa Fuentes case with all viable leads that come in. Uh, additionally, on September fifteenth, we sent a press release out to the media. Our officers stopped a vehicle, uh, with a Sanger man that was in Selma convicted felon that had a ghost gun with him. As well as some other felonious counts. So I just wanted to kind of let you all know about that and thank my staff for doing phenomenal job. They're really, uh, accepting the challenge that we've given them, so. That's all.
Thanks for that. Community Services Director, Spark?
Yes, all right. And you know, I got a list for you guys today. So, uh, thank you again. Uh, so I wanted to first start off with October fifth. Uh, at the senior center, we'll be hosting, um, a free flu vaccine, uh, from four to seven P M. Again, that's on October fifth and it is free. It's for ages six months and up. So if anybody is interested, uh, again, that'll be at the senior center, October fifth. We are also hosting our annual senior resource fair, fair on ten twenty-seven from nine to eleven in the morning. So if you're familiar with any, um, resources or organizations that provide services to seniors. Uh, we would invite them to come out and host an infinite, uh, educational booth for that. Tickets are now on sale for Pippin. If you guys, again, I, I highly encourage you guys to check out a show at the Selma Arts Center. They've been working really hard. I got an opportunity to sit in on some of their practices and recite it and it was, it was incredible. So again, tickets are on sale. That show will run from the seventh to the twenty-second of October. Um, another art center news, we are incredibly excited. We are up to two season sponsors for, um, our shows at the Selma Art Center. And they're continuing to seek, uh, sponsorship. So to have two for the full season is pretty incredible for that team. Um, we also will be, uh, Pioneer Village will be partnering with the Chamber of Commerce for the Rib Cook Off on October first from twelve to five P M. Uh, we are partnering, uh, again with the Chamber, Harris Ranch, um, and other organizations to bring this to our community. So if you guys would like to come out, we've got information on that. Um, and then I too also would really like to thank Tracy over the finance department. I know that was a lot of work. Um, and I think, you know, when we see teams come together and accomplish that, it just gives you a lot of, uh. It, it makes you feel like we are actually part of a team and it's, it, in the, the four months that I've been here. Um, it just, it, it gives those good feelings. So thank you, Tracy, and to the entire finance team.
Thank you. Okay, council reports. Council member Mendoza Navarro.
Yes, just a couple of things. Um, so I attended the League of Cities, um, annual conference and expo, uh, last couple of weeks, uh, last week? Last week. I remember it. All my weeks are, all my days are running together. Excuse me, I attended a couple of sessions. Um, there was just so much to, to, to sit on and I wish I could have just been. You know, put a recorder in every single one because there was just so much great information. Um, there was a couple of things that I, um. Really wanted to, to, um, a session on. Like emergencies and, um, emergency responses and like public, um. What was it called? Like public attacks? And so one of the things that they talked about and I didn't even, you know, um, think about this, like to make sure that we're. Working or that staff is working with, um, the, the city, um, police and, and, um, you know, or safety. And, you know, for any type of attacks, you know, during, during the COVID, um, there were a lot of riots. You know, during the shutdown, there were a lot of riots. And so it's, it was, is your city prepared? You know, is your city really prepared for that? Um, the other thing is they did talk about, you know. Um, attacks during meetings, you know, during council meetings. And one of the things that I, um, really highlighted to me was. Um, the mayor of Riverside made a really good comment and she said, you know, your, your meetings, your council meetings are business meetings that are conducted in public. They're not public meetings, which means that the public, yes, they have their three minutes to say what they have to say. And they have that right to, to, um, you know, come to your meetings and talk about that, but they're not public meetings for them to. Um, you know, they, they do voice their concerns and, and there is that, but it, it is a, a business meeting that's conducted in public. And so I, I really, that really resonated with me. The other thing that, um, I attended was a mandatory harassment training. And I've been in the public industry for twenty-three years and this was the best harassment, um, training that I've attended. Met a lot of great information and, uh, a lot of, um, just really different perspectives. And so, um, I, I, I took a lot away from that, from that meeting. So it was a really good meeting. Um, the other thing is, um, I was recently installed as, uh, I'm part of the Selma Catholic Women's Club. And I just was recently installed as the second vice, um, president of the, of the, um, of the meet, of the group. And also I want to, um, put a plug in, we are holding our, um. Annual fashion show on November fifth. It's been. By, backed by popular demand, but we weren't able to do it for the last couple of years because of COVID. But, uh, we are doing our fashion show on November fifth and that's going to be at the, uh, Monsignor Daniel Hall. Um, I don't have a time yet, but, um, we do have that and we'll have the dinners. I don't have a exact amount, but I think they said thirty dollars, but we're still, um, we'll be putting out more information. And that's it.
Thank you. Council member Trujillo?
Yes, I, I too, uh, went to the, uh, City League, uh, conference. I all, got certified to the, uh, sexual harassment class. But, uh, the one solid word I can bring to you, the council is networking. Um, you know, I, I have, I, I thank God I have good friends and I can mention, um, Madera, Kalanga, Dinuba, Kingsburg. And from city managers to city council members, we're all talking, talking amongst ourselves what the needs are of our communities, what they're doing, what we're doing. One of the biggest things in regards to attending a, um, a city league meeting is not, you know, classes are very important. The biggest thing is networking and talking, understanding what they're doing. So that's what I took from the, the classes and gave Reyna my certification. Second was, um, attended the, um. High speed rail graduation, which is nice. You know, we, we've been doing that for a while and really, really happy to see our staff there. Thank you guys for being there because it really is a big commitment to our city. Uh, it's a big investment. Uh, some people, some people in the past have questioned, you know. P L A's, you know, but those guys are going to be certified. They're going to get, they're going to become union workers. You know, think of that. Some of these kids are going to be making twenty to fifty dollars an hour. Uh, I come from a business background of twenty-four years and, uh, in working in concrete. So I just speak highly of every different diverse jobs in this market. Uh, the other thing I did, I attended the, uh. Car show in Selma and I, 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 I told Shartuck I was going to talk about this because it's really important. You want to talk about economic development, you talk about getting a chamber involved. Last year there was almost about ninety-eight, my maybe speaking ill, about ninety-eight participants. This year I heard it was about a hundred and twenty. I felt it. I own a restaurant in downtown. My workers worked hard. They were coming from, and I talked to them, people came from Porterville, Clovis, Fresno, Madera. They came from all sorts and they were really happy about the town. They loved going downtown. They loved the fact where our park was real clean. So I was really happy. I, I made it my point to walk over there and tell them thank you because on Saturdays I participate. I wash dishes in my restaurant because I let my employees know they're very important. And one thing I noticed was, there was a lot of people in our community. I take from that because of the fact that when we in the city of Selma work together to bring events, it brings economic development. So to me, that is very important. So to the chamber, I tell you, thank you. To the council, I tell you, thank you because that's the vision we have for our downtown. And last, the I'd like to say, because I'm sponsoring it, Bev's A Fight is a Linus, Linus Fight. I'm not gonna be there, but I, I, I'm gonna be here in moral support. So for that, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kara?
Okay. I attended, or I was invited to the Jackson School, Elementary School for the second grade classes. There's two classes and they wanted us to illustrate or city government. So it was really, really cute and they've asked really cute questions. And, and we told them that one of them, one, one day they're gonna be the mayor and city councilwoman. So that was kind of nice. So we, we did that for two classes and then we got invited again to another school. So we'll be doing that school as well. I also attended the Central Valley Training Center graduation and this was my fourth graduation. And to date, we've had seven in the city of Selma. And speaking to Leanne, we're gonna have many, many more to come in the, in this, in this city. So that's a great thing. I wanted to express, there was a really special young lady. Her name was Elizabeth. She had scored really high on her apprentice math test and she was offered a apprentice position right at the, at the get-go. So that was amazing and I was very, very proud of her. And also I'd like to say that there was two students or graduates from Selma. So that was a nice thing to see that they were from Selma, city of Selma. And when I, when they introduced these individuals or before they introduced them, they asked them where they were from. And this was a variety, they came from Teleri, they came from Dinuba, Reedley, Selma, you know. So this is really showing that it works, you know, they're coming from all over and it was great to see that. And then my last item is, this month is Hispanic Heritage Month. And as September 16th was Mexican Independence Day. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Cho?
Yes. I'm so happy, actually. There's new street signs out there. I can actually see the name of the street when I'm driving by. So thank you so much. So Public Works, I guess they put above that, I'm really happy. I did attend the league too and you guys said the same thing I would be saying. I did attend the classes. It was really neat to be able to meet some of the city managers from the different cities because we all have this, like you say, everybody has the problems and it's kind of neat to share it because then it bounces off your head and they could give you an idea, we just steal it and take it home and make it work, you know. And it's, it's good for all our people to be able to go to these conferences and, and share with other cities. Because there's cities from all over this, you know, California. I guess they have it once a year, next year will be in Sacramento. Okay. Yeah, I went to the Central Valley Training Center. This is actually the sixth one graduation. There's like 95 people have graduated from this class. And this one actually had two women and we're really proud of them. Actually chose catered it this time, first time and it was pretty, they liked it because they normally, I guess, get sandwiches. So we did a good job for them. Also attended the car show and that was really, really good, turned out really good. We didn't have that many pre-registration, but by the end of the, the, you know, all the cars came, it was over 100 cars and the people were really enjoying it at the park. And it's great weather too. All right, pack fight. It is the fight, it's gonna be Sunday, September 25th. And it will be a police officer versus a fireman. And I would like to see you guys out there supporting them. And then we do also have a local lady that's fighting and she's gonna be representing Team Selma. And, and it's a shallow Valverde. And so I'm selling tickets at Cho's and Valverde Tile. So if you get it ahead of times, it'd be 35 for general, 45 for VIP. If you get it day of, it's $10 more, okay? Uh, see. On Monday, on the 25th, the bureau group that, 559 bureau group is gonna have a fundraiser. It's gonna be at Cho's, I opened a restaurant for them and they're gonna try to get some more money for that bureau. So everybody's welcome for that, it's 6 o'clock at Cho's Kitchen. Okay? And that's it.
Thank you. Um, I want to say thank you to all those who supported me during my Ironman 70.3 last weekend by contributing to the Central Valley Honor Flight. Really appreciate that. And Central Valley Honor Flight had their trip last week and it looked like it was a real success. On the catalytic converter bill, making it harder to sell stolen catalytic converters, passed the Assembly and Senate and is on the governor's desk now to be signed. Or I believe Selma's bill is waiting too to be signed, right? Okay. Let's see. I, I got to address the graduates at the Central Valley Training Center. Love doing that. The, the graduates were amazing. They worked so hard to, to go through this program. Also got to speak to second graders at Jackson School on Friday. Love seeing that, some really great questions. And, you know, it's just been refreshing and awesome to be able to go door to door and talk to the real people of Selma. And, you know, I'm optimistic about the signs, but there are a lot, there's lots of work to be done on those signs. Hard to read a lot of the signs in Selma, that's something we need to definitely get on. But the people of Selma are amazing. They, some of them say things that, you know, are controversial. Some of them say things about the country, but we, we always have a good dialogue. And I really appreciate those who take the time to talk with me about their time, their town. Because they're the public and it's their city, just like this meeting is their meeting. So this is why we do all this. We're not behind closed doors in a closed meeting, but in front of everybody in the public and, and online. Because this is a public place. And with that, we will move on to our last oral communications. Does anyone have anything they'd like to say at this time?
Teresa Salas, 1701 Dinuba Avenue. I have a question, actually. We got some rain today, not a lot, but we did get some rain. I know back when I worked for this city a long time ago, we used to have a lot of problems with flooding when we had a lot of rain come down. And we're hoping maybe we'll get enough rain that we can have that kind of problem again. But it's just, I know that Public Works is just very shorthanded and I was just curious as to how the storm drains, are they being cleaned? Are they preparing for winter at this point? Because we haven't had rain for such a long time and it was just something that someone else brought to my attention. Also that it's like, are we prepared for a deluge if we should ever get it again?
Great, great question, City Manager.
Yeah, Deputy City Manager, would you like to answer that?
Yeah, absolutely. We do have our Public Works crews right now that are actively working on our storm drain system. Not only are we planning the long-term master plan items associated with that, but they are detailing the day-to-day maintenance items associated with it as well. Right now, they have been very active, leading up to what we are hoping is going to be the wet season. They've been very proactive on that. And in the last, last few weeks in particular, have been putting more focus on that.
Sounds good. And I know there are some issues on the storm drain over at Skelton and Park. So there are some issues that hopefully Public Works will be addressing here, but definitely talk to you, talk to you about that. Any other oral communications at this time?
Yes, Louis Franco, 1064 Mill Street. Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to relate to the city manager, if you could thank his staff. I don't know who's responsible, but the new flag over Lincoln Park looks really nice. I know it was, was in disarray for quite a time. So just kudos to staff for addressing that.
Thank you.
Jim Adal, 1701 Dinuba. As far as the, the city, as far as the flooding situation, we fixed the Nelson Boulevard area, it used to be very bad. Thanks to the city workers and the city money that we had available, we fixed it. I know certain areas in our communities, there is some issues, but overall I see the Public Works doing a great job as far as with the street sweeper and everything. I noticed they're driving around, you know, Avos drives around too, so he, he watches who's watching here. So they're doing a great job. The Public Works, you gotta tell them, hey, high five to those gentlemen. Because they keep the city clean and, and, and operational and the parks clean, everything. I, not only do the parks keep clean, but also our staff works from the city here. They're part of the, they're part of the equation too. And I just hope we fix the banking situation. I don't want the employers to get mad. So, but thank you guys for, for what you guys have up there, okay? Thank you.
Any other comments at this time?
1057 Mill Street, Rose Robertson. I'm, I'm sorry, but I was getting texts and being interrupted. I didn't get the city attorney's name.
David Yanis.
David Yanis, welcome.
Y-A-N-Z, thank you.
Welcome.
Appreciate it.
I do want to just say that unfortunately, on the last PRA that I requested from the Zondel Smiths, total was quite up there. So I, I know it was a little less than a half a million dollars from the time they were here. But, and, and then, you know, of course, they were no longer here. But I, I, I do look forward to having a new attorney here to look out for us citizens and our taxpayer money. And also, Amy, I'm still, Amy Smart, I'm still getting a lot of good feedback on you. And I really do look forward to the Selma downtown business. I know that us being here for so many years, that's one thing citizens of Selma have always requested was to have a decent downtown and events and, you know, events with the Selma Unified School District in our entire city. Excuse me. And also like to say that I would like to thank Bev Cho, Councilmember Bev Cho, Sarah Guerra and Mayor Robertson for voting in speakers. Unfortunately, Trahill did not vote for speakers, nor did Lanka Navarro. But it was a $30,000 amount that they had allocated for downtown speakers. And, you know, baby steps to bring our downtown helps. Just getting the lights there with our citizens, the cafe lights. And that, that was a chore and they requested that for over seven years. And we finally just decided to do that ourselves. But I do appreciate that the downtown business is coming in and people are very excited about that. So I will send them your way when they have other questions and answers. So really do appreciate that, thank you.
Anybody else with any comments? Have anybody online, on the phone? Their motion to adjourn?